This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, Bob, start over.
Let's start over. All right. I'll make a motion to open the meeting. Do I have a second?
Renee?
Second.
Yay.
Okay, let's go for a vote.
Okay, trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating? Can't hear you, Dan.
Can't hear you, Dan.
Motion passes.
No, you can't hear me?
No, we can't. Now we can.
Can you hear?
Okay, motion pass.
Okay, I just wanted to make a follow up to the, we had an email exchange with Dan this morning. Dan, Hodgson Russ in the budget year for 2019, 2020, budgeted $100,000. The actual amount we spent was $107,687.54. So their estimate was only $7,000 off. So our projections have been pretty accurate, actually, all along.
But Bob, but I totally disagree with that because that's what they spent in the given year, but if nobody knew that they were also holding a $70,000 check that we, or $70,000 bill that we need to pay, essentially it is $170,000 because that's what we are being invoiced during our fiscal year. Any but, any budgeting pro will advocate for that. I'm not do, I'm doing this by the book of US GAAP. So we, we received bills for $170,000 this year. To paint that as 107 is really inaccurate. But if that's what you want to do, go ahead, but I'm going by US GAAP accounting rules.
Well, US GAAP accounting rules, I don't know what bearing that has because our budgetary procedures are specified by the New York Comptroller's Office.
Right, and I doubt the New York-
Excuse me, I'm talking, please don't interrupt. of the $169,181,052 was accrued in the 2018, 2019 fiscal year. Now, I know you like to distort figures, but those are the facts that I got from the treasurer today.
Yes, I like to distort figures, so let's move on. Bob, that's an outrageously inflammatory statement. I'm telling you how an accountant would do this. You can choose to spin the numbers however you want. I, we spent $170,000 this year. There was a $70,000 bill that, for some reason, was not handed to us, which I don't think they just did that on their own. I think they were instructed to do that. So Bob, you're not going to convince me that the way that the generally accepted accounting principles are is not relevant here. This is what, so.
Well, well, the fact is, it's not relevant because the Comptroller's Office is the one that dictates municipal financial rules in New York State. Those are the only rules by, that this village or the 538 other cities and villages in New York State follow. So you can try to, you know, distort what's happening here, but we're trying to deal in facts, Dan. And these facts are provided by the nonpartisan treasurer, and those are the facts that went into the long deliberations that we made over the budget process.
Okay, are you done? So I would really love to call the Comptroller's Office and say to them, because you're quoting the Comptroller's Office as if they're okay with us just not including $70,000 worth of bills that we received during this fiscal year. So you're making an assumption that that's the way they want it done. I don't think that's accurate. I think if you call a Comptroller's Office, and I certainly will, this is, this is an academic discussion. You have one way of looking at what we've spent, that it's not that big a deal. And I have another way of looking at it that says, we received bills for $170,000 this year and we only budgeted 100 for it, and that's a big problem. So you can spin it however you want. You can say the US, the Comptroller's Office, but have you talked to the Comptroller's Office and had them say, you know, when you receive $170,000 for, worth of bills during a fiscal year, you should only include 100 of it? Because only 107 of it was, was actually accrued this year. It doesn't make sense. So, look, we can argue about this all day. I'm not moving off this position. We spent $170,000 last year. Received $170,000 worth of bills last year, and we should have adjusted it for $100,000 worth of bills.
Well, that's simply just not true, Dan. It's simply not true. And, you know, this is the statement that shows you that what you're saying is factually incorrect. You can't argue that.
This is the statement. What does that mean, this is the statement?
This is a list of the legal bills that we received from Hodgson Russ in 2018, 2019 totaling $6,490. They were accrued in the year, and that's the year when we asked them to defer payments because at that time, we were having a cash flow issue. That's something that we have discussed multiple times in multiple board meetings. When you ask the question, we've talked about it.
This, hey, Bob, when, when you produce for me, when we talked about that as a group, I'll believe it. Bob, this is really, I don't understand why we're arguing about it.
It's not my responsibility to do your research, Dan.
Bob, you're claiming that we talked about this. I'm telling you, prove it. Because I can't prove that we ever talked about you telling them to withhold payments. I really don't want to talk about this. Okay.
Well, of course you don't. Is that what DeMarzo told you to say?
That is totally offensive.
Well, no, it's not, given your behavior.
Okay, okay.
Can we get back to the-
I'm not going to address that. I'm not going to address that.
Can we get back to the-
Of course you don't want to address it because you don't want to disclose any of your private conversations with the DeMarzos, do you?
I'm not going to.
Of course you don't. What are they giving you, Dan?
Hey, may I ask a question of Renee Stetser?
Can we bring this back?
Hold on, hold on, Renee, can I ask you a question real quick? What should I say here?
What should, I think we should stick to what we came here to, to, to look at. I wasn't on the board when a decision was made to defer the payments. All I can do is try to make sure that whatever going forward we do is it is done in a manner that we can all agree to. And that, I mean, I don't, the, the discussion about whether you know the DeMarzos or not doesn't have a place here. We've done that before. I would like to just focus on what we came here to do, which is to review the agreement and to look at the, the, to look at the agreement and to look at the invoices. I believe those are the two things that we need to, to do today. So I would like to, I, I don't think it's productive.
It's only relevant because Dan refuses, refuses to disclose his contacts with DeMarzos. And he seems to be acting as an advocate for them rather than for the constituents who elected him.
Okay, I have to address that. I have completely disclosed it. I've written it down. I've submitted it to this group. There has been nothing, there's been no contact since. I have nothing further to add. If you'd like me to read that statement, I will. Again, I think the last time I sat with them was within six weeks of taking office in 2018. And I, to further, I asked both Bob and Frank to do a similar disclosure where they write down every single time. I provided a lot of information there. So to be accused that I have not disclosed is just simply inaccurate. Would you like me to resend? I can share my screen here. Let me show you the, the statement I'm referring to. It's been submitted into the record. So we're done with that conversation.
Neither Frank or I have had any meetings or conversations with DeMarzo, so we didn't have the need to do that.
You've never met with Chris DeMarzo one-on-one?
Not since very early on in the project process.
Okay, so.
And I can respond for myself, trustee Galusha. I've never met with Mr. DeMarzo one-on-one, never, never.
Have you ever?
And I want to respond to the other issues that are being brought up here. And then we ought to, then we ought to put it to, to rest. There are many factors brought up regarding general accounting principles and the state comptroller. There are many factors that are involved in what we're talking about that cannot be brought out here to do a proper analysis of what happened. So I think you made your point, Dan. You made your, your point, Bob. It's time to move on. But there's, there's one other point that I want to make. And that's the, the point that no one, neither Bob Corby nor I have ever asked Dan Spitzer or Chuck Newcomb to not submit bills. We never asked them. We talked about the village's financial position, how we're going to have to figure out how to pay them. We may have to do it over time. But never did we ever say, hold back a bill. I stand on that. I will not move off that. We never did that.
I'm done.
Okay, moving on. All right, so we have, Dorthea sent out a proposed update to our agreement with Hodgson Russ, which you've all had an opportunity to look at. And that's what we're looking for, a resolution to approve today. Any questions, discussion?
The agreement that was sent earlier was from 2014. And is that every, prior to that, do you just renew that every year?
Actually, that one, I spoke to Dan Spitzer today. That agreement is ineffective, does not have an ending date on it. So it just stays in effect as long as we want it in effect. And his solution for this problem was just to do an amendment to that engagement letter that I sent out about an hour ago.
Okay, so this, basically, the, this agreement will be the same for this year, so the hourly rates, which range pretty wide.
Right.
No, can I clarify?
Yes.
Okay, trustee Galusha. The, Dorthea's right. The, the engagement letter in, in 2014 does not have an expiration date as some of the engagement letters that we have. So there is, so their engagement letter is amended as they just did. There's a problem with this amendment that I'd like the board to consider. The first one is, they did leave out Mr. Spitzer's and Mr. Malcolm's hourly rate, which did change. Their hourly rate is $205 per hour and their associate hourly rate is $290 per hour.
So it's not 259 and 250? And Dan at 259 and Chuck at 250 in the 2014?
That is correct. That is correct. So that's what their current hourly rates are. The other change is, if you look at the, the next to last sentence in the first paragraph.
Am I looking at the 2014 agreement or am I looking at the proposal for today?
I'm sorry, we're looking at the May 29, 2020 amendment of the engagement letter. It says, the next to last sentence, the remainder is due between June 1, 2021 and May 31, 2023. That should be June 1, 2023.
Not May 31st? June 1st, okay. So the remainder is due between June 1, 2021 and June 1, 2023?
That is correct. And in conversations that I've had with our treasurer, we have tentative plans to make three payments on June 1, 2021 of $46,000, June 1, 2022 of $46,000, and June 1, 2023 of $46,000. That adds up to $138,000. If you add the $32,000 to that, that we're going to pay on June 1, 2020, it comes to the rounded number of $170,000. Is that making sense?
Yes. So that, so this takes care of the current bills and then, or the current invoices. And we need to amend the hourly rate of Dan and, and Chuck that are in the 2014.
Right. There, yeah, there, 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 hourly rates will increase to $305 an hour.
Okay, so not 205, 305 in both of them? It'll be the same?
Yes, they will be the same.
305, so I had a question about that, just based on the extensive conversations we had when we were budgeting and how we are trying to do what we can to minimize and the costs. And I know, is there any way to anticipate ahead of time how many attorneys they will use for a certain action? Like, I know sometimes when we're just on a call, we will have one of them. When there's a court or some litigation that they're actually in court, or often they will take more. And so, I mean, I understand what they were saying in the agreement, that it's hard to anticipate who and, and what will be needed.
Renee, can I answer that? Because we, previously, we have had a conversation with them about the need to minimize billings. And so they had pledged that wherever possible, in court appearances and in hall work they have done, that they would try to have only one person be attending. And so only, only in certain situations, when Chuck consults with Dan because it has to do with something that might have implications for the whole firm, or if it's a legal issue that they just want Dan's expertise on, everything has been handled recently by, by one person.
Okay, okay. And then, so we've got this payment plan for what we owe them thus far. And anything that's accrued going forward, our plan is to pay it monthly? Or will we then establish a new payment plan for that? Do we need, do we follow the agreement, that 2014 agreement where it says that it's due within a month? For anything going forward?
I can address that. That we are going to be on a pay-as-you-go basis, which is what is actually stated in their, their, their letter. So we will pay bills, legal bills, as they are incurred going forward.
Okay.
And the other thing that I want to add, Renee and everybody, is that when we have the final numbers, the final year-end numbers, I don't anticipate us increasing the annual payments that we make to them. But there's a possibility that we may be able to, or, um, well, what I'm trying to say is, I don't anticipate us decreasing the amount that we're going to pay them annually. But there's a possibility, as, as these few years go by, that we may be able to pay them more to pay down the debt faster.
Right, and that debt is-
Frank, thank you for that. I'm sorry, Renee.
No, go ahead.
Thank you for that, Frank.
I've had the floor long enough.
Thank you for that, Frank. And I agree, that is the way we should be doing it. Paying, receiving an invoice every month, paying an invoice every month, planning to pay what we owe in our back amount, paying more if we can. I think all of that is very responsible practices. So going forward, I'm glad that we've cleaned up previous behaviors.
Well, we haven't cleaned up previous behaviors. Again, without having been on the board at a time, you're trying to mistranscribe things for which you weren't a part of. What we were doing and was being conscious of our cash flow. Because, because of Mark IV's strategy has been to try to financially drain the, the village with your help to facilitate the approval of their project, which is in violation of the approvals that were actually given to them by the two independent regulatory boards.
Feel better? Okay, well, let's move on.
And there's no-
I, I just, I just like to have the facts straight, Dan.
And there's no-
As you are.
With that in mind, are we in a position to make a motion? If we are, I am prepared to do so.
Me too. Would someone like to make a motion?
Frank, I didn't, I have one question for you before we get to that. I didn't, the, the contract just came in 90 minutes ago. So I've not had time to throw that into a program to tell us what's different between the two. Has anybody seen anything different other than the rate?
If I can really comment, there is nothing different. The agreement is the same. It's the 2014 agreement. Nothing's changed the agreement except for what Frank stipulated and the sheet that you got today. This is it. This is what you're looking at.
In fact, the date still says 2014 because we're still using that. Because as Frank said, there's no expiration date.
It's just an amendment to that agreement.
All right.
And Mary and Dorthea-
There was no rate increase. There was no rate increase on some, remember when we looked through the Hodgson Russ bills from 1920? There seemed to be an hourly rate increase, Frank. I don't have it in front of me.
Frank just said 305, right? Is that the one you're talking about?
And actually, if I can address the board real quick. If you look under the rates, under it, it says, all rates are subject to change. So we already agree that their rates were possibly subject to change than what was in the agreement. It's in there. So it's very, if you go right under, it's the last line in that, under the rates. So they had the ability to increase those rates all along.
Okay, but, but we don't have anywhere in writing from them that says their rate for 2021 will be X.
That's what Frank is just adding to the amendment, right, Frank? Is that what you were proposing?
Frank is looking to add that to the amendment.
Right.
Yes. Which is a good idea.
But if you look at the, the May 6, 2014 agreement, page 2, right at the very top, the last sentence, it says, however, these factors, well, this is in a, a, a full paragraph that, that talks about fees. And that's where you got the $259 rate, Renee. The next page, the last sentence, they say, however, these factors will not result in our fees exceeding the indicated amounts based on our hourly rates without prior discussion with you. And we have talked with them previously. So it's no surprise, but we forget sometimes.
Can you go a little farther with that, Frank? I love that language. Can you go all the way toward, you won't, it's the, without prior discussion. I want to see it discussed and then sent over as an amendment. If there's a rate change, it's going to be effective on this date and it's this amount.
Yeah, how do we-
Can you just add a little language on that?
I suppose, Bob, are, are you going to be speaking with them? We could ask for, for a, a revision to this engagement letter because we do have to change the, the-
We can call them after this meeting is done, and I'm sure Dan would be agreeable to that.
All right.
Can we still vote on it?
It's a little more solid than if we have a conversation because then it's a he said, she said. I just want to see when they, when they're going to change their rate, send it to us in writing with, you know, X amount of days' notice.
Dorthea, you might want to weigh in here.
Can I weigh in, please? The concern we have right now is dealing with the back invoices and getting this long-term debt settled. If we don't settle this today, it creates a problem. Can we do another amendment to the retainer agreement to address rates and just deal with the retainer agreement amendment regarding the billing, the outstanding amount? That way, they're two separate issues, and I think it would be a lot cleaner. Then Bob and Frank can take the time and get the proper language, and you guys can argue, you know, the wording or whatever, Ben.
We can present it at the next meeting.
Correct, and this is settled, so we can have this handled properly, so Mary can sleep at night. Just so we have our books right. That would be the cleanest way. I get where the board needs to get the rates addressed. I think it's a little open-ended, the way it's written in the original retainer agreement. I agree, we should have a little bit more language to address now. But let's just address the outstanding debt. Can we do that and then deal with the other issues separately?
That sounds like, that's fine with me. I don't know how everyone else feels.
That sounds good.
Trustee Lamphier, I agree.
I think we could do that, Bob. And if, if we're prepared, I'm prepared to make a motion. Is everybody ready? I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to approve the payment of $32,000 on June 1, 2020 to the law firm of Hodgson Russ as per the agreement noted in the 529, 2020 amendment to the engagement letter dated May 6, 2014, which still remains in effect. The agreement calls for additional payments between June 1, 2021 and June 1, 2023 totaling $138,000, representing the balance due after the payment of $32,000 on June 1, 2020. That's the motion, and I've written that out, Dorthea, just in case you don't get it all.
Nicely done. I thought you did that off the top of your head.
I'll second Frank's motion.
Can I ask for a slight change to it? It's really terrific. One thing I'd love to see in there, because we have not completed our review of this year's worth of invoices. We still have more work to do on that. I love what you're saying here, which is, we're going to pay you this chunk now, and we're going to schedule the rest later. But some clause on pending review of fiscal 2020 invoices that gives us, because I don't want us to commit to paying the full amount until we've done a full review. You see what I mean, Frank?
I do, and, um.
It's probably right. It's probably right, and we'll probably pay the whole thing. I just don't want to sign something saying we are going to pay the whole thing.
What's everybody else's?
Can we pay the, the most immediate is getting that $32,000 paid. So I think we can safely say we can do that. And then the other payments pending review, whatever, if we can add in something there.
Yeah, I can, I can add something, that last sentence, Dorthea. I can say, this agreement calls for additional payments between June 1, 2021 and June 1, 2023 totaling $138,000, representing the balance due after the payment of $32,000 on June 1. This schedule is, this, this schedule is subject to final review by the Board of Trustees.
Yes.
Where the amounts are something.
There we go.
Because I think we agree on the schedule, it's just the amount.
I accept Frank's amendment.
The underlying invoices are subject to review? Something like that?
Yes, we don't have issues with the schedule.
You'll find the right words, Frank.
We just have issue, we just need to make sure the amounts look correct and the invoices are correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So does that do it for everyone?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, all right, well, the motion's made.
I'll second that.
And I accept their amendments to the, to my second. Dorthea, could we have a vote, please?
Trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Okay. Another item we need to resolve in, it popped up today when we were going through things, looking at this. We need to make the payment on the FOPV settlement, where the agreement, we need to have that go out June 1. So I need authorization from the board to send that payment out subject to being paid out of the 2021 budget.
So moved?
And that amount for the board is $33,166.66.
We have a second?
I'll second that. Trustee Galusha?
Okay, trustee Lamphier?
I'm sorry, I missed the motion because I, I lost internet connection for a moment.
Bob voted to approve the payment for the Friends of Pittsburgh Village Settlement for the, where did I lose the amount? Frank seconded it, and now I'm doing the roll call. $33,166.66, Frank seconded it, and now I'm doing the roll call. So, are you okay with that vote, trustee Lamphier? I think we lost.
Lily, can you hear us?
Lamphier.
Okay, there you go.
Okay.
Now, you're muted.
We heard her aye, though, I heard.
I think we got her aye. Mayor Corby? I think we lost her.
Corby, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Motion passes.
Dorothea, is that settlement up on the website? Someone asked about it after the budget meeting, when we were discussing it. Um, do, I know we have an announcement there, but is that something that, I mean, that's publicly available, right? Or is it?
It's publicly available by foil, if people want to go back to our packets, it's in the packets.
It's in the packet, okay, great.
Yeah, it's in the packets, and just to update the board, I am cleaning up the website some. Uh, we're using a lot of memory, so I'm going to be removing packets from everything from over a year from now.
We have everything printed, so if we have to go.
We have all the records.
We have a meeting logbook, none of the information is being lost.
Nothing's lost, the meetings will be up there, the minutes are up there, it's just anything that, the packets are huge amount of space killer. And I do technically still have them in another spot, they can get to them on the website, but I just want to clean up, so we're not paying for extra space we don't need.
So, we'll still be able to search for minutes, um, from those meetings, so we can refer, okay.
And the public can always boil for everything and anything, but there is a way for them to get to the packets, it's in another part of our website, but I'm just pulling them off the main site, off the calendar.
Fair enough.
Except for the, like, a year's worth.
Okay, okay. And I don't have anything else.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
No, uh, no motion to adjourn, I have a couple of things that I'd like to bring up.
Go ahead, Frank.
Frank, it's Friday!
Okay, this is very easy. You all received an email from Robert Ament.
Yes.
On, on bees.
Yes.
Well, I'd like to.
Yeah, oh, sorry, go ahead, finish your thought.
I, I, I would like to clarify something, and I'm bringing this up because his, his last statement, he talks about the DPW finishing one job at a time and using common sense. Well, I want to put some common sense into it also. And, by the way, Zach and I met this morning, and, and I went to, to this gentleman's store at 11:30, and he was locked, because I was gonna talk to him personally.
Oh, well, that was nice, Frank.
What happened was that our crew saw there was a nest of bees in a tree near the fountain, and they were flying around, and there was some concern that they would sting some people walking by. So, our crew, uh, blocked off that part of the sidewalk. They determined that they were honeybees and not wasps. Had they been wasps, we would have used a little spray can and killed them, but, as you know, Bob, honeybees are in jeopardy now, so they didn't want to do that. So, they blocked off the sidewalk, and with the, with the plan that, uh, they, they called somebody like, uh, people called Exodus Exterminating, they came down and removed the queen bee. Once you remove the queen bee, the other bees go away.
Right.
So, they went and they did that Friday. Saturday morning, one of our DPW people, Joan Rule, went there to check, to see if it was clear, and to take down the barrier if it was clear. Before she got there, Mr. Ament got there with his spray can and killed all the bees, and he took down the barrier. So, that's what happened, and I do not want anything reflecting bad on our DPW, who did experience, who did show good common sense and good, good environmental responsibility. So, I thought, so I thought you should know that, and I am gonna call on him if I, if I can get.
I want to add to what Frank said, um, it was the beekeeper's advice to leave the tape up for a few days, because sometimes it takes a few days for all the bees to migrate to wherever the queen ends up. Um, and, and I also, I put it on my Facebook page, I asked Bill Smith to put it on his page, which he did. We also put it on the Pittsburgh Concerns and Happening, as well as the Village website.
When I responded to him, Frank, I made sure to use the words, um, you know, relocation, to let him, like, I really hoped, I had hoped he was, um, just being inflammatory about using the spray. But it sounds like maybe he did, he did spray the, the bees, um, which is, okay, yeah.
That's unfortunate, because bees are endangered.
Yeah, no, we, I, our crew did the right thing, and that's the only thing, I knew about it, because Bob and, and Bill both, both put it on their website, um, and then he, you know, I had been talking to him about the Shane Place, uh, idea, and I think he just used that as a, as an open line of communication, which is great. So, thank you, Frank, and it would be awesome if you'd reach out to him.
I will do.
If you were comfortable doing that, okay. I don't, I don't think anyone else is, is.
I have a brief update.
Wrong thing.
Um, I talked to Joel at, uh, uh, the State DOT yesterday. He said now, they've kind of changed their tune, and they would be willing to put up more Cobra lights at our expense if we want additional lighting on the bridge. They were hesitant about the lamppost idea. I, I also expressed our need, uh, to have, um, a meeting with DOT to try to get some of the traffic calming improvements we talked about for State Street implemented. And he promised to send me a, a contact over there for the, um, the group that's handling the repaving project on, on that section of the State Street. I haven't received it yet, but I will be in touch with all of you, uh, to see, and probably just Renee and I would attend that meeting, but I wanted to give you an update.
Great, are the Cobra lights, Bob, the Cobra lights are the ones that are up there right now, right?
The kind of crappy ones that are up there.
Well, I, I don't think we need to spend any more money on crappy lights, there's, I mean, Bob and I talked about this the other day. I walked it, um, at about 10 o'clock at night, and it, the, the lighting was adequate, it's just ugly lighting. It's nothing like what we have on the canal, or, you know, it's not quaint, but I don't, if they're saying they're not open to other lighting, then I don't think we need to pay for more Cobra lights.
I think we spend our money elsewhere, I think the money would be better spent, uh, to eventually getting some lights on the North Main Street Bridge, where the sidewalk is much narrower, and it's much darker when you cross the bridge at night.
Yeah, um, I don't know, that's, that's my opinion, I mean, we'll have some time to talk about this, but if they're gonna put more Cobra lights.
What's silly about this whole thing is, for years, on the lift bridge in Careport, uh, they have very nice, um, I'm trying to think of the word you call them, I can't, I can't think of the, the word to describe them, fairly, fairly compact kind of nautical lights that are mounted on the truss of that bridge. That would be a perfect solution for both State Street and, and for North Main Street.
Is that a state-owned bridge? I can't remember.
The bridge the state is, uh, repairing right now, it's owned by the Department of Transportation, even though it crosses the canal. Okay, any other issues? Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Trustee Galusha.
Second.
All in favor?
Trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye, can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
Okay, because there's a little phone icon, and it's not a microphone, so I.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye. Dorothea, I will call you after the meeting to get the wording down on that motion.
Okay, great. Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
And trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Meeting's over. Thank you.
Thank you.